Hello, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council this Tuesday, February 4th. Before we get started tonight, I first would like to take a moment of silence for Vicente Colision, who was tragically killed last Friday, right here in Library Park. I actually had a couple of college courses with him at Mendocino College about 10 years ago. Great guy, and I will remember him as a bright spirit and someone who was truly fun to be around. So please take a moment with me to remember him. Thank you. Now, I would also like to compliment our law enforcement agencies, the Lakeport Police Department, the Clear Lake Police Department, and the Lake County Sheriff. The subsequent investigation and apprehension of both the subjects involved was swift, and it really showcased our inter-agency collaboration, so thank you. Also, there's going to be a candlelight vigil on this Saturday at Library Park. That's the 8th at 7:30 PM, and the community's welcome to attend. Okay, with that, can I get a roll call, Kelly?
Yes, Councilmember Matina here, Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
And Mayor Costa is absent, so Mayor Protem Disney.
Here. Okay, we are all here. Next up, the Pledge of Allegiance, Nick Walker, would you like to lead us in that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the acceptance of the agenda and urgency items. Kelly, do we have any urgency items?
We do not have any urgency items.
All right, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as posted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Any council member may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda. Removed items will be considered following the consent calendar portion of this agenda. Item A, ordinances. We're reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage, per Government Code Section 36934. B is the Measure Z Advisory Committee, receive and file the draft minutes of the MSAC regular meeting of January 15th, 2025, and Application 25-2025-006, approve the application with staff recommendations for the Memorial Day Craft Fair. Would any council member like to pull any of these items?
No.
Anyone from the public like to say anything on the consent agenda? Nick, do we have anyone online?
I see no hands raised online.
I'll bring it back to council. Motion.
Mayor Protem, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries.
A question, is there usually approval of the minutes of the previous meeting in the consent agenda?
There are, looks like they were missed, so we'll bring them back next meeting.
Okay, because I thought that there was some missing.
Good catch.
Yeah.
That's a good catch.
Nice.
All that experience you have.
Next up is the public presentations in request. First up, public input. We do have a letter that Councilmember Price will read out, but is there anyone in the room first that would like to provide us some public input? Not seeing any hands raised in the room, anyone online, Nick?
None online.
Okay, we did receive a letter that Councilmember Price will read out.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This was a letter sent in for public comment on behalf of, from Chris Allen. Dear Lakeport City Council, my name is Chris Allen. I'm a resident of Lakeport. The council has no doubt heard of the murder of a local man down at the park last Saturday. First, I would like to thank all of the Lakeport Police Department and all local law enforcement agencies for their hard work in apprehending the suspects in the case quickly. The man that was murdered was Vicente Colacion. He was a larger-than-life character that made friends wherever he went. Vicente saw the beauty in everyone. You could hardly ever have a conversation with him where he wouldn't say something you said or did was beautiful. He was brutally honest, sometimes to a fault. He was a beautiful soul and will be greatly missed. Several people with the blessing of Vicente's family are organizing a candlelight vigil being held in Library Park at the gazebo at 7:30 this Saturday. I have the honor of inviting this council and the public to the event. The outpour from the community has already been tremendous. Please come and support his family. For those that knew him, be ready to share a story of Vicente. Anyone that has met him has at least one. Thank you so much, and thanks again for Chris Allen for writing this. And again, I invite the community to come and show support, not only for the victim, but for the survivors and also for the agencies and community involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to move on to Item B, a presentation by NHA Advisors, the City of Lakeport Calpers Unfunded Accrued Liabilities and Pension Update.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. As I'm sure most of you are aware, pension-related costs associated with Calpers are extremely significant for municipalities, especially the city of Lakeport. We've done a lot with these in the past. Leading into the budget season, we typically like to provide, you know, kind of an update on the climate of Calpers. So, NHA Advisors are the city's contracted consultant municipal advisor. They help us issue debt and deal-related transactions, but they also, you know, are a consultant that does a lot of work in this sphere too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, and I will share their presentation.
Hi, Mike, thank you.
Hi there, good evening. Am I coming in clearly?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. As Nick mentioned, I'm Mike Meyer, VP with NHA, been working with the city for a little over a decade now. We could probably flip, Nick, to the executive summary on Slide 3 and just kick it right off. As Nick mentioned, it's a bit timely right now to walk through some updates, given that Calpers ended their year and put out their most recent actuarial reports last fall. So we will go through what that means in terms of the UAL debt for the city of Lakeport, but based on the most recent reports, that number currently stands at 6.4 million. One piece of good news is that Calpers did beat their targeted investment return last year, so fiscal year '24, they earned 9.3%. So we do expect that the city's new UAL debt will be reduced to about 6 million once those reports are released this summer. For some of you who were on the council a few years back, the city did issue bonds to restructure a portion of the UAL back in October of 2021. So that was to refinance some, a good portion of the UAL at that time, as well as an old lease bond at a 3.06% interest rate. The city has been very diligent about taking the savings created through that restructuring and funneling those dollars into a separate trust, and we'll look at how that trust can be used moving forward to help stabilize these rising pension costs. Next slide, Nick. Just a few slides here on some Calpers basics. Why have Calpers' costs been trending higher over the last decade? Well, their investment returns haven't been meeting their goals, and they have been changing assumptions. So while investment returns were double digits back in the 90s over the last 25, 10, 20 years, it's been in that 6% to 7% range, which is a lot lower than they initially had assumed. So as those investment earnings have fallen short, Calpers continues to change their assumptions, and each time they do that, it directly drives up unfunded liabilities for agencies. So right now, that discount rate is at a 6.80. You can see that underline there on the right. We did want to highlight that. That has come down many times over the last several years, and as it comes down, it means that Calpers doesn't expect to earn as much on their investments, meaning that agencies have to pay more. This discount rate, as well as the other assumptions, are being evaluated actually right now by Calpers. They just kicked off their asset and liability management study. They do expect to have some recommendations for that this summer and fall, so I do think kind of checking back in on the results of that is going to be very important later this year, because any changes to the inflation assumptions or the discount rate is going to be a direct impact to the city. Next slide, please. So this is a graphic you may have seen before. It's up on the Calpers website, but this really shows in a simple way how retirement benefits get funded for retirees. So about a third of those benefits, you can see that in the middle there, 34 cents on the dollars paid by the employer, so that would be the city of Lakeport, about 11 cents on the dollars paid for by actual employees, Calpers members, and then the remainder and the vast majority is paid for by investment earnings. So right now, that sits at about 55 cents on the dollar. Just to note, that percentage used to be a lot higher. It used to be, before the Great Recession, about 65% to 70% of retirement benefits were paid for by investment earnings. And so as those investment earnings are making up a smaller share, it means that cities have to pay more. So that, the number for cities and different employers, cities, counties, other agencies has risen from about 20 cents on the dollar to 34 cents. Next slide, please. The city, as well as all agencies, make two types of payments to Calpers each year, the first being the normal cost, and that's the cost to keep up with current employees. And then the second payment, which is typically larger, is to amortize this unfunded accrued liability, also known as the UAL. And really what the UAL is, is it's the shortfall, and it's shown here in the light gray. It's really the gap or the shortfall between what the city needs to have in assets to be fully funded, which is known as the accrued liability. That number's in the navy blue bar there, and it stands at 40.9 million versus what you actually have in assets with Calpers, and that's 34.5 million. So the difference there is about 6.4 million. It's obviously a large number. Calpers doesn't require agencies to repay that all at once, so they do amortize that, and they charge you a 6.8% interest rate, and they amortize that over about 20 years. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, the city did, in the fall of 2021, restructure a large chunk of the UAL at that time into what's known as a pension obligation bond. So right now, if you're looking at the left side of this slide, that's the city's actual situation as of June 30th, 2023. You had a little over 7 million of pension obligation bonds outstanding, and that's at a fixed interest rate of 3.06%. The city issued bonds when rates were very low, about three and a half or so years ago, and it has a fixed repayment shape. And then the $6.4 million UAL that I've been referencing is what you have outstanding with Calpers, and so that is amortized at a higher interest rate of 6.8%. The city's overall retirement funding is very healthy. It's in the mid 80 percentile, so 84.4% right now. Had the city not done the restructuring, we do estimate that the UAL that you'd have with Calpers right now would be closer to 14 million, and all of that would have been at a 6.8% interest rate. So the city is in a better place, having done that restructuring and taken advantage of lower rates. Next slide, please. This chart is a history of the city's UAL with Calpers, as well as the funded ratio. So the funded ratio is shown in orange, and then the UAL is shown in the gray bars. And just a couple of things to note here, and probably should have called it out in a text box, but there's a big drop from 2020 to 2021, from 9.1 million to 6 million. That's because Calpers earned 21.3%, so they had a really good year with their investments. It dropped the UAL for the city. You don't see much change from '21 to '22, but there was actually a lot happening there. So the city, during that fiscal year, the city did refinance about 6 or 7 million of UAL, and that would have brought down the UAL to close to zero had Calpers actually had a good, had met their mark with their investment earnings. Unfortunately, they had a negative 6.1% earnings year, which drove up the UAL by 6 or 7 million. And so essentially, those two things offset, and that's why you don't see a lot of change there from '21 to '22. But that, there was a lot happening that year with reduction coming from the pension bond, but then an increase coming from Calpers' poor returns. And then that UAL has hovered from, you know, between 5.4 and 6.4 million over the last few years. Next slide, please. So as Nick mentioned, we check in with, we work with Nick and his team each year just to kind of recalibrate the city's strategy on how to manage rising pension costs. So I think this is probably the most important chart of the presentation. It goes back several years, showing what the city was paying on this UAL and other debt payments there. And then looking forward, it shows in navy blue what those fixed payments are on the pension bond, but in light gray also shows what the new payments are that are owed to Calpers on this new 6 or so million-dollar unfunded liability. So you can see there that there's been a few years now of lower payments. That's attributable to the timing of that restructuring, and the city's been very diligent in taking those savings and funneling it into a separate trust, known as a 115 trust. We understand that the balance of that trust, as of the end of last November, was a little bit over a million dollars. It isn't a fairly conservative investment portfolio, but it did earn a pretty healthy 8.76% for fiscal year '24. In addition to those savings going into the trust, you can see here that very important to plan for the future, because those cost increases will be coming online starting next fiscal year and rising pretty quickly. The reason for that escalation is that when Calpers has a bad year, they don't assess you the higher payment in full right off the bat. They actually will phase it in over about a four- to five-year period, just so it's not as big of a budget impact. So that's why you kind of see a staircase shape in those payments. Next slide, please. So what we wanted to do was show how the city can leverage the dollars in that 115 trust moving forward. Obviously, it's a very good asset to have, a nice rainy day fund. As those payments start to increase that are due to Calpers and shown in the gray bars there, the city can start to withdraw money out of that trust to help offset the cost there, and that will minimize the impact to the general fund. So this is very preliminary, but we just wanted to show the council kind of in a, conceptually, how that trust can be used to really shave down those payments and stabilize them at a lower level, and those are shown in the orange dotted line. Pretty conservative analysis here. We don't assume that the city adds any more to the trust. We did assume a very conservative rate of return of 4%. So to the extent that the city does find additional resources to put into the trust or and/or the trust earns better than that 4%, it just means that you can bring down those, stabilize those payments, the net impact of the general fund at a lower level. Next slide, please. I think that's the last slide before opening it up to questions. As you can see from the presentation, many of you have been around over the last many years to help make some of these decisions. The city is much better off having done that restructuring in '21, but it isn't out of the woods. You're still on the hook when Calpers has these down years. It's nice to be in a position where you do have that 115 balance of 1.1 million. Obviously, to the extent the city can continue to add to that, it'll only be helpful moving forward, and especially in light of the fact that Calpers may change some assumptions this year. So very important to keep monitoring the situation with Calpers and modeling these things out as you make budgetary decisions moving forward. So with that, maybe, Nick, I'll turn it back to you, and if there's anything I left out, just let me know.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Mike. I guess the only thing I would add is, Mike mentioned the ALM process that Calpers is going to be going through, and it's highly critical to how we're going to be affected in the future. So there's going to be advocacy opportunities through CalCities if you're interested in being involved. I've attended hearings at Calpers and spoke on city's behalfs, so stay in touch with CalCities. I think it's the, I forget which committee deals directly with Calpers, but they reach out and ask for advocacy during those hearings, and so it's a good opportunity to, you know, speak for the city of Lakeport.
Great. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Nick. I'd like to check with the council, see if we have any questions for either Nick or Mike.
Mayor Protem, I attended many California League of Cities meetings, and they had one, and I think it was in a time where we were suffering from poor returns, and it was one of the worst sessions I ever went to. It didn't seem like the Calpers representative was well-selected, and he didn't seem to know what he was talking about. The question that I would have for Mike would be, is there certain restrictions? Because I've talked to a lot of people that, you know, we talk about maybe investments and what they're doing and how well they're doing, and then you find out that, is there certain restrictions on what kind of portfolio construction Calpers has? I mean, are they restricted from, you know, going out and saying, well, we're going to invest in, you know, Big Pharma, and we're going to invest in, you know, solar or whatever? Are there certain restrictions that they're required to meet because of state law or anything like that, first off?
You know, Councilmember, I'd have to do some research on that question. I know they do have some restrictions. I'm more familiar with their overall kind of allocation of stocks versus bonds and real estate and private equity, which they've shifted in a big way over the last several years. They've gone to a bit more conservative of a portfolio in terms of reducing their stock exposure, but I would have to do a little more research on some of those restrictions on the investments.
Yeah, because when you mentioned that our 115 trust is very conservative, and it, you know, hit 8.7 at conservative, but I know a lot of people were, you know, doing 2022, and then all of a sudden, Calpers came in, you know, minus 6, when things were not that bad. And I mean, they need to meet 6 for us to stay even. If they break, if they hit 6, then we don't add any more to the UAL. But when you go minus 6, and I heard a rumor that they were heavily invested in eco-stocks or whatever, and then I heard recently that Vanguard and Front Street and some of the others are pulling out because there were poor investments. I just heard it rumored that they were heavily invested in those things, and I just wondered if you had any information on that, but thank you.
I can add a little bit. So what you're talking about is disinvestment, right? Where, and it's a highly political process, where the legislature is urging Calpers to disinvest in certain industries. And, you know, it's happened in the past. At the most recent conference I was at, Calpers was talking about tobacco, right? The legislature urged them to disinvest in tobacco, and they did, and they've lost a lot of money. And so they have all the information on the returns that they've lost based on these disinvestment policies. I can't say that the new leadership at Calpers is against disinvestment. They do feel, from a management standpoint, that their job is to earn as much as they can. However, like I said, it's highly political, so the legislature's pushing on the Calpers Board, and the Calpers Board is then, you know, making some decisions on which industries to disinvest. Thank you, Nick.
Any other council members have questions?
No.
I know it was just a presentation, but I'd like to open it up to the public, see if we have any questions from the people in the room here. Doesn't look like it. Anyone online with questions, Nick?
No hands online.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. Thank you, Nick, as well.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing, as I've been around, and the most terrifying thing to me as a long-term council member is poor performance. And Nick just pointed out that their job is to try and make, you know, an active portfolio that makes money, and when they don't, it can have cataclysmic effects on all the municipalities throughout the state when they don't meet their 6%, especially when the market is soaring. It's been a real thorn in my side to see them doing such things as disinvestment because of political winds and different trends. But it can make, I mean, we see how millions and millions of dollars are added to the UAL at the whim of some kind of disinvestment, and their main job is to try and manage that fund so that we have the pension obligations met. And that's the thing that's always bothered me, because we, what do you call that? Refunded part of it, a huge part, and it was a very brilliant thing to do. And then shortly thereafter, they ran it up again, and I think we did it once when Dan Buffalo was here. And it's terrifying that when they make bad decisions, and we're just running our business, I mean, our city the best we can, and it can have cataclysmic events where 5, 6 million dollars of unfunded accrued liability just pops up out of nowhere. And it is so scary, and I just, you know, want Christina and Brandon to realize that this is something, nothing that we can control, but it's something to really be afraid of when, you know, everybody's making money in their diversified portfolios, and then they disinvest in certain things, turn away from certain things, and then we got to pay millions, literally millions of dollars, for a bad return that doesn't hit 6%. That's, I just wanted to bring.
Yeah, no, it's hard to not have any control in it and have such a huge impact on our city.
Well said.
Thank you, yeah, it's, well, let's move on.
It could be terrifying.
Yeah. Next up is council business, and Item A, back to the Assistant City Manager for a professional services agreement for JJACPA Inc.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So it's come to my attention that the contract with our current independent auditor is expiring, and so we are requesting that you authorize the city manager to execute another three years with our current audit firm. They've worked for the city for some time now, and they've done an excellent job. We feel that during a time of transition, it's very important to maintain that continuity for the new finance director and existing staff that are going to be here. The auditor can be a really good resource to answer questions, and, you know, they know how things are operating at the city. So, you know, to ask a new individual to issue an RFP and hire a new auditor, we feel like at this point in time, the best solution would be to renew their contract for another three years. I will say, when we did RFP the last time, I believe five years ago, their fees were extremely competitive. You know, almost half of what some of the larger CPA firms are charging for audit services, and they didn't really increase them with the proposal they sent us. It's up to $44,000 a year if we require a single audit. Otherwise, it's $35,000 a year, which is a very affordable price. We will require, I know we will require a single audit in the next cycle after we spend the ARPA proceeds, but after that, it's kind of hit and miss. If we get a big federal grant, we do, and if we don't expend a large federal grant, we don't. I guess we do have a large federal grant that we're going to be expending here in the next couple of years, which is the CDBG DR. So there's likely to be this three-year contract to be. uh, the CDBG DR, so there there's likely to be this three-year contract, it to be about forty-four thousand dollars a year. Um, but with that, it is our recommendation uh that you authorize the city manager to execute this professional services agreement.
Great, thank you, Nick. Um, any questions, clarifying questions from the council?
No, no.
Okay, then I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the room here like to speak on this matter? Not seeing anyone. Nick, is there anyone online with their hand raised?
No hands raised online.
Okay, back to council for discussion or a motion.
Mayor Protem, if there's nothing further, I'd move to authorize the city manager to execute the PSA with JJACPA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Next up is item B. This goes to our Administrative Services Director to receive an update on Communication Team Statistics for two thousand twenty-four. Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, tonight I'd like to provide um an update on the Communication Team's activities for two thousand twenty-four. Highlighting successes and challenges and areas of potential improvement. Um, as you may recall, the Communications Team was formed in early two thousand twenty-one as part of the city council's goals to improve messaging to the public and public outreach. Um, since then, the team has been meeting monthly to plan and assess our communication efforts. We utilize a variety of platforms, including Facebook, Instagram, X, Nextdoor, Nixel, Press Release, City Website. Um, to ensure timely and effective communication with the community. A separate dat- task group um also meets periodically to improve the city's website. This past year, um, we continue to expand our engagement. Um, some of the most notable achievements included that our Facebook engagement skyrocketed. Um, our views increased twelve times as compared to two thousand twenty-three. Uh, Public Works saw significant growth in their Facebook page with a twenty-nine point three percent increase in reach and a forty-three point seven percent increase um in followers. Our website traffic remains strong with over fifty-six thousand users accessing city information online. Um, we also did face some challenges this last year. Um, overall, Facebook reach declined by forty-three percent. Uh, we believe that's largely due to a decrease in boosted or paid ads. Um, the limited resources do remain a concern. Um, the Communications Team operates without a dedicated budget. Um, all work is done in addition to existing staff's responsibilities. Sometimes mandated functions such as making arrests or stopping sewer overflows get in the way of communications. Um, we also did lose two critical members of our team. Um, we uh lost Brad Rasmussen and Andrew Britton, who not only um were a huge part of the team. They loved it and kept up um a lot, so we had uh to pick up the slack with other team members and learn those roles. Um, some of the uh other metrics that were interesting this year. Um, we had two hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred and forty views um in two thousand twenty-four compared to twenty-three thousand four forty-nine in two thousand twenty-three, so that's a pretty big jump. That's on the city Facebook. Um, city Instagram increased steadily. Um, the police department ha- remains to have a very strong presence across all of their platforms. Um, and again, Public Works uh pages have grown. Um, and then for the website analytics, our most visited page was the job opportunities, um bid opportunities and city council agendas. Those three pages were our most visited. Um, and we did have an increase, uh as mentioned before, in website users. Um, we issued over a hundred community news posts on our website. And the most popular topics were Independence Day, the Dickens Fair, and emergency preparedness. I also have the, our most, I think, viewed post was the splash pad. Um, that got a lot of traction. Um, so looking ahead um for the next year, um, we're seeing that boosting um posts can can get uh have a much wider reach, and we use that mostly for recruitments. Uh, but we could, you know, apply that to other um other posts if 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 desired, so desired. Um, expanding into video content is is a desire, but it's also um an area that we need to learn. Um, and uh staff training and tools would be also a great um, would would it would enhance the efficiency of staff in in getting these things out quickly. Um, and then just exploring potential funding. Um, we wanted to bring this to you ahead of any goal setting, so that if there is a desire of the council to expand communications just then that might be where some budget funds would need to go. So, um, with that, um, our commu- communication team remains committed to providing timely and relevant uh information to the commun- community, and um we appreciate the council's support. And I am here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions from council?
Um, we touched, I just returned from the California League of Cities uh new council member training. And definitely, social media was something that was brought up. Um, it is obviously the, excuse me, the main way that people in the public are consuming their information and getting their news. Um, that being said, this needs to be priority for the city to create um, either a um, we just need to really get in front of our public a little bit better. Um, they had mentioned that the pub, the average person has an attention span of like eight seconds or something. And a goldfish is nine seconds. That being, that being said, um, long, lengthy Facebook posts, I'm not sure people are reading them. Um, we could always improve on um including videos, making our posts a lot more um, to the point, straightforward. Um, utilizing Facebook, if that is our main platform, then we really need to look at um streaming Facebook Live. Um, it doesn't cost us anything, whether it's just somebody running the computer and logging in. Um, that really needs to be explored. YouTube is another thing. Um, I was um also appointed to the PEG Board for the public um TV station. That is something we can reach out to. If we need to have somebody here video, doing video so that we can get it out to the public, then that's something that we need to do. Um, they are there for a reason. They're there to, it's public. Oh, I'm not even gonna go there, but um I know that it's for education in um government to allow access to what we're doing here. So that really needs to be priority. Um, and again, it is our job as city council to educate our public and our constituents. And we have to get our information um out to them in a way that is structured. Obviously, the city manager does all the communication and then gets it out to us as constituents to get it out to the public. Um, so if we could all just work together and really make that a goal, then I feel that um we can get that presence a little bit stronger.
Any other council member?
Question, Kelly, the um boosting sounds like um it's something that costs money. And looking at how we've done, um, this is one of those kind of questions, so that when we go to cause I look, I I'm very impressed with progress, and it's sad to see that um Andrew's not here and chief. Um, I'm sure that Dale probably do a good job as well. But um when it comes to boosting and and who gets it and, you know, why they open it, uh, you know, if you were in a business, maybe you can monetize it. But I think under the current sort of situation, I'm not really sure that that um boosting is something with, really gets you, you know, the bang for the buck. So I think it was a good strategy, and from what I can see, it looks like numbers are pretty good. But um, that's something that obviously is a budgetary concern, and in these days, it might be something we might wanna know about before we start throwing the idea of, hey, let's let's boost it, and you know, if we get some numbers on that. Um, do you have any idea what that kinda, is it pennies, thousands, tens of thousands? I mean, you know, cause
I
Just roughly.
That the um, like the the, some of the recruitments did get like very widespread, like twenty thousand.
And I get recruitment, I get that.
Yeah, and so those um, but we, when we um boost a recruitment, we we throw some money at it, like.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense.
Cause you can spend ten dollars and you can spend two hundred dollars, like, so we'll spend two hundred bucks. And a lot of times it spreads out to areas of the state that don't even know where Lakeport is, so.
So like all the way to Windsor and places like?
Might go all the way to Windsor. Um, but um, so that we find it is, has been very effective. We have also boosted some um, like I I believe the park grand opening, we boosted. Um, and so I think larger community events probably would be worthwhile if we're trying to draw folks into, you know, from Allen County. Um, so that would be my recommendation is to, you know, or if there's something that the council is just really desiring to see a big community turnout um for, they could let us know, we could boost some of those.
Well, it sounds to me like the boosting is is being used wisely, and it doesn't sound like it's that expensive. You know, so, okay.
And then also with the boosting, are you doing targeted ads or are you just doing by location? Just just out of curiosity, and because if there's a way to also identify your pixel on where your your leads are actually going and who's actually receiving that information and clicking on, it's a whole analytics thing. We can look into it. I'm not gonna bore everybody with it. But there's ways to go about um how, what whatever net you're casting to the outside. That's all I'm saying.
Um, there, there is, but I can't specifically
Okay.
Answer how.
I think we've done both. I think
Yeah.
With the um, with the job boosts, they've been specific.
Yeah, but we've been specific in area, like we try to keep the area Northern California. Um, but we don't wanna also get caught in the trap of discriminating um in a recruitment. So when it asks for ages and things like that, we just
Leave it open.
Leave that blank, but.
Protem? Um, I I I know when we made it a goal um for the city to do more outreach, it was a really big ask because we don't have a communications department that can just do the work. But everybody really stepped up in their own departments, and the numbers are crazy. There, it's really, really good, like you're blowing everybody out of the water when you make the comparisons. And some, to get that many um people looking at it, I'm just really impressed and super happy. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll give that back to the team.
I'll just piggyback on that. I know that um city staff has an entire plate full of just your regular jobs and to put posting on Facebook and keeping track of the reach and where does it go and who do we target and um just, I mean, I own a business. I hardly ever post on Facebook, and we should. But it's so time-consuming, so really kudos to you and your team on on the work that you do. Um, and realizing that that social media and our website is how people get their information now. And I do think we're doing a good job um putting some emphasis there.
And just to be clear, I wasn't trying to personally attack you or 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 Facebook. I feel like every time I open my mouth to say something, I'm made out to be the bad guy, so I do apologize if it came out that way.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, but um, I I think that um having the perspective of the last couple of years and the the trend that we're we're heading towards is definitely better, and it is where everybody gets their information, so so good job.
Thank you, and of course, this can come up again in council priority, you know, discussion and and um you know, we've been asking around a little bit about what other cities are doing and how much they're spending. And um, and so, you know, I think that next step is just gonna be a jump to adding, you know, budget dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Try to bring some budget dollars and.
Specific staff, person, or an outside firm, but it all all requires money.
Right, so that's kind of where it's headed um.
What about an intern?
There you go.
How about a student or somebody who is really good at Facebook or that can do it for? There's there's just other ways to go about it.
Yeah, do it for experience instead of paying them. Okay, thank you, Kelly. Any any other, before we move on, council?
Maybe the public?
Yeah, public. Thank you. Nobody in the room? Anybody online, Nick?
No hands online.
Okay, no motion required on this one, so we'll move on to item C. This is our Utilities Director, Paul Harris, to receive an update on water and wastewater operations.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to just uh provide you an overview of the utility operations and an update on some of the projects and how they tie into both water and sewer. Um, so I have a slideshow presentation. Okay, so as indicated, we have uh both water and sewer in the city of Lakeport, so I'll start out with the with a cleaner version of water and talk about the wells. Uh, we do have two sources in the city of Lakeport. Um, we're fortunate in that way. Um, many uh uh agencies around the county either have groundwater and or surface water. Uh, we're fortunate to have both. Um, so I'll start out with the uh groundwater wells. Let me catch up here. Okay, so uh we have the Scotch Creek Wells. Um, they're high-capacity aging wells, but the eight-inch it does about nine hundred GPM. The four-inch does four hundred sixteen GPM with a combined capacity of two point two million gallons per day. Um, the issue with these wells, if you look closely in the slide, is that they are in the creek bed. And so that makes them subject to creek flows, and we have to um take them out of service whenever the creek begins to run. So these typically will only be operational from about August to November, December, or when the first rains. Um, as uh permit requirements is the same as basically uh surface water treatment. We have to monitor the turbidity a twenty-four seven and um and have a four-log removal in the uh, in the uh tanks that distribute water for the city. Okay, so then uh the Green Ranch Wells. Not too far, I apologize. I'm trying to get these synced. Okay, the Grand Wells, uh, we have two out in the um Scotts Valley Aquifer. In addition to the Scotch Creek, Green Ranch East, Green Ranch West, combined capacity of point eight four million gallons per day. And these fortunately do operate year-round. Um, they will uh sustain our um capacity requirements. Um, usually through uh April um, until, let's see, it'd be about September. Uh, we have to utilize the surface water treatment plant or the um, or the Scotch Creek Wells to supplement because of their limited capacity. So basically, once we get into May, June, um, these be become uh not enough for the city. And we have to move on to uh another source, which would be um normally the surface water plant until the Scotch Creek Wells come on. All right, and then Surface Water Treatment Plant, uh, it's a state-of-the-art facility. Um, we have been utilizing the wells out in Scotch Creek for uh since about eighteen ninety-nine. And then after the nineteen seventy-six drought, um, it was decided uh wisely by uh city staff that we needed a second source. And so in nineteen eighty-one, the Surface Water Treatment Plant was built and uh to also provide us with a second source. Um, the, it's a conventional alternative treatment, pre-oxidation, coagulation, floculation, absorption, media clarifier, mixed media filtration, uh, and it has absorption media, which is the GAC, and then disinfection. So it is operational year-round. It usually only operates, like I mentioned earlier, uh, usually May through July uh to supplement um the Green Ranch Wells until the Scots Creek Wells can come online. And then we will take, uh typically take it offline, um, because it is uh much more costly to treat surface water just because of of all the steps and all the chemicals and all the energy costs with the oxidation. And then this slide is just a a quick overview of the uh sources, the source availability. And then over the past few years, five years, we have um some averages of the average day. And then over the past, uh, few years, five years, we have, um, some averages of the average day, maximum day and annual total of million gallons per day. Um, so if we look at the average day demand, it's, it's actually held pretty tight to about point six oh. Um, if you compare that against pre-two thousand fourteen, when the first drought happened, these numbers were actually a lot higher. And so, uh, so the drought has, has actually, um, promoted conservation enough that we see a reduction in, uh, supply demand. All right. So storage, storage tanks are located near the, uh, four groundwater wells. They pump into the storage tanks that supply pressure to the city through gravity. Um, they're also used, as I mentioned, for, uh, disinfection. So we maintain a four log removal, which simply means it's a calculation of contact time for chlorine with the water, um, to make sure that it's, uh, safe to drink. We also add sodium hydroxide, uh, for corrosion control. Uh, the pH of the well waters typically around seven, six point seven to six point nine. And we want to boost it about to, uh, seven point six, seven point seven, um, to provide a, uh, make it less corrosive to the system. If you allow it to, uh, be corrosive, then what happens is the copper and ductile steel out there will, um, it'll, it'll corrode much faster and your distribution system will, will deteriorate much quicker than it should. Okay. So distribution system, we have approximately two thousand three hundred and fifty service connections. Approximately two, two hundred thousand linear feet of pipe, thirty-eight miles worth. Pipe sizes range from one inch to fourteen inch in diameter. Uh, pipe material primarily consists of cast iron, asbestos cement, galvanized steel, ductile and PVC. Um, some of the older cast iron mains may date back to the eighteen nineties. I will say that a lot of our mains are currently fifty to seventy years or older on average. Um, fortunately, they put in cast iron and, um, it, it, it does stand, stand up with time, um, compared to other facilities that I've operated. Um, the, the mains in general are in pretty good shape. Uh, but a lot of them now are undersized and there are certain areas where they become, uh, so deteriorated that we have to start replacing because they begin showing, uh, signs of, uh, constant leaking. Approximately twenty-eight percent of this distribution system is a substandard size, four inch or less. So back in the forties and fifties, they thought that four inch mains were adequate for fire protection and domestic. And as, uh, you know, things, um, developed, um, it clearly is not enough capacity to provide the fire flows needed today. Um, so that's one of the targets that we look at is main size in addition to leaks. Uh, let's see. And then, uh, we average about fifty leaks per year. Um, they're mostly failed service lines, copper flare fittings at the main typically. That's where probably ninety percent of our leaks happen. Fifty leaks per year in comparison to other Lake County agencies is actually pretty low. Um, an agency that I worked for prior, uh, there was, we, we could get over two hundred and fifty leaks per year. Um, and unaccounted for water averages about six to ten percent. Um, where I worked before, it was averaging about fifty percent. So half the water was actually leaving the pipes through leaks. Um, which is not uncommon, but, uh, so we have a pretty tight system. One thousand one hundred forty-four valves, two hundred ninety-eight hydrants to maintain and forty-five dead ends to maintain with flushing on an annual basis. So projects on the water side recently completed, um, the granular activated carbon replacement of two vessels that was complete. Skater ser, skater system server upgrade, um, that was complete. Uh, it seemed fairly new to me because we got a new skater system in twenty sixteen, but we all know how computers work. It became outdated, uh, the servers were, uh, we couldn't even get software for them any longer. And so we had to upgrade. And so now we have, uh, server and cloud-based backup, which is kind of what everyone's going to. And a lot more, uh, protection, uh, from cyber attacks. Um, so we're feeling pretty good about that as well. So there was a lot of benefits with the skater server upgrade. Uh, Clearwell assessment, um, or Clearwell, which is the tank used for chlorine contact at the surface water plant. Uh, we had an engineer firm do an assessment and determine if we need to replace the tank or if we could actually rebuild it, um, in its current state. And that's still out to the jury because it's really close. Um, so we're trying to figure out, uh, the best course of action moving forward in the years ahead with replacement. Um, the problem between the two is it makes sense to replace the tank because then you're starting, you know, of course, a whole new life. But the seismic requirements, uh, the pad, it's all a lot more expensive than the original. If you go to refurbish the original, sometimes contract change orders because they can't see everything related to the work required could end up costing more than a new tank by the time they're done with it. So it's really a balance to figure out. So we're, that's in, that's in the works. And then projects in progress. Um, so I'm sure everyone here is aware of the twenty twenty-four pipeline project. Um, that includes Lakeport Boulevard from South Main to Beavins, two thousand one hundred twenty-six feet. Martin Street, ma, South Main to Beavins, Lake Shore Boulevard from Ash to Beach or at the city limit. Uh, Armstrong from Smith to Berry and Tenth Street and, uh, from High to Tunis and Tunis from Tenth to Eleventh. Um, so a little section of main there that needs to be connected, replaced and, um, so that, those are, are projects underway. Um, you'll see in the sewer section, we also have sewer mains being replaced on Lakeport Boulevard and Martin as well. Um, water well development at the Green Ranch property, um, we're looking to construct a new well. Um, as I, as I mentioned, the life, um, of the, the lifespan of the Scotch Creek wells, um, are, they're coming to the end of their useful life. Um, they were installed in about nineteen seventy-two. Um, gaining access into the creek bed to maintain them, um, is difficult. And so they will eventually, um, we'll have to shut them off, um, but we are going to utilize them as long as we can. But it's, uh, um, we're being proactive and trying to get a replacement well for the four inch, um, so we can start taking them down. Um, the other advantage is that with this, um, well development, a new well goes in the ground, we should be able to sustain with well water, um, three hundred sixty-five days a year as opposed to the, um, needing to supplement with the surface water plant. Um, once that happens, it'll be a great cost benefit. Um, it'll be great water quality throughout the year. Um, the surface water plant produces good water quality. Don't get me wrong, but the, uh, Scotts Valley Aquifer is just, um, outstanding. And, uh, so, but with that comes a challenge of when you have a surface water plant that needs to actually operate and run, um, you do have to balance, you know, maintaining it and, and improving that infrastructure as well, so running it on occasion. And then the chlorine conversion for groundwater and surface water. Um, so, uh, that's for the, um, water treatment plant and for out at the Scotch Creek wells. We want to get completely away from gas chlorine just because of the risk involved with gas. So, moving along. So, future, um, well construction. So right now it's in design. They're looking at, um, at, uh, yeah, designing the well and then we will have to equip it with the pump and all the controls. And then of course, we're going back to the Clearwell rehab replacement. That does have to be addressed, um, in the, in the years down the road. Uh, I would say within the next five to ten, um, that has to happen. So. Any questions on the water side before I move on to the wastewater side?
I have a couple of questions, Paul. Um, so if I remember correctly, um, I went out there years ago and near the Green Ranch is where the, in the creek, Scots Creek, is it, it's very near where the Green Ranch is, you know, like it's contiguous.
Yeah.
And so the discussions about moving the Scots Creek thing is actually a green ranch to kind of like tap into the same aquifer, so to speak, similar?
It, it is. That's correct.
Okay.
But there's a minimum distance off the creek to meet the requirements from the state to not have to, uh, treat it as it was, it would treat surface water. And so the well being more than a hundred, hundred and fifty feet back like the Green Ranch, then we are able to run it twenty-four seven, no matter what the creek is doing.
Okay. Another question. So in previous conversations, I've been concerned about things that fall into the lake. Um, does the surface, you have a whole layer of all these things that are done at the surface water plant. Does it deal with, you know, I mean, we're historically worried about mercury and other things. Do which, which one of those categories addresses or does it address like, uh, you know, aluminum and lead and mercury and things like that?
It does. It depends, it, um, depends on the constituent, but it is a multi-barrier treatment. So when you have, uh, coagulation and flo- floculation, filtration, oxidation, all those things combined is multi-layer. And then so most things should not make it through, but not all metals are in that category. Some will, some won't. Um, I could see most of them to probably oxidize out with the ozone that we use and then we'd filter it. Um, but again, I do, I don't see any, uh, excessive reads, you know, coming from the raw versus the finish to really tell the difference, you know, like it's astronomical and then we have this reduction as far as metals go. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a certain level of removal for, um, anything in the lake.
So do we, do we monitor, you know, known neurotoxins like lead, mercury and aluminum in the water regularly?
We do, but regularly being, I believe it's every three years, um, on the raw source. So that's the requirement.
Yeah, cause, um, it's kind of scary. I just, uh, I just heard that the Shasta County Board of Supervisors, after listening to, um, Geoengineering Watch dot org, they did it, had a presentation from Dane Wiggington and, and he pointed out the levels of aluminum in the snow and they passed a, a, a county ordinance to stop chemtrailing because of the astronomical levels of these metals that they're finding in snow, which is supposed to be, you know, the cleanest water. And, um, I'm not sure with the acceleration of what I consider to be a lot of chemtrailing that maybe three years might not be, um, prudent to wait too long if they're pumping neurotoxins into the water and we're only checking it once every three years. So that's just something and, and they did act actively do that, I think, last month. And that's a big move and, and no one author, it authorizing is certainly hasn't been voted on, but it's been going on. So it's just something that we need to keep an eye on, especially when it poisons your brain. So that's just my comment on that. Thank you.
That was from Shassa, just to follow. Okay. Yeah. Interested in that.
I can maybe send you the link on that.
Okay. That'd be great.
While we're, while we're on water, does any other council member have a question?
Uh, I have one quick question while we're still on water. Um, when you say that about twenty-eight percent uh, is at a four inch diameter or less, uh, which would probably constrain the system a little bit, is their future plans, uh, to, i- is that one of the, the top items that you would have replaced on your wish list is upgrading those?
It, it definitely is, but, you know, it has to fit in with other things that could be more imperative. Um, but main replacements are definitely up there. Um, you have to stay ahead of it. It's really hard to not, um, have depreciation start to back up on you. Um, but what we, uh, um, we do have a list of mains and, and I thought I mentioned it in here, but as, as part of the, one of the projects that we're working on is, um, master plans for, uh, water and sewer. And so, um, that is going to demonstrate based on leak history, size and also flow modeling of what, uh, the list that they produce on what they would recommend replacing. That also includes infrastructure, um, and so it's going to be a nice, uh, engineered report that should, we should get um, around July to kind of help us move forward and maybe also help us with like trying to obtain some grant funding. Because now it's captured, it's identified and go from there. So yeah, a couple of factors is one is the restriction, like you mentioned, fire flows in the system. And then of course, the other one is leaks. And so when you have a, a leaky main because you're, you're in there all the time breaking asphalt and tearing into it, um, those typically will come first. Um, but then it's a matter of, you know, like looking at Lakeport Boulevard and, um, and Martin Street, those are both ten inch mains replacing a six and an eight. Now, six and eight seem like pretty decent main size, but, uh, they're smaller than what we like in that area because they're going to transfer water from the west side to downtown Main Street. And, um, and also both of those, uh, mains had a history of leaking. And so it was kind of a win-win to get those across to, uh, ten inch. So several factors to look at, um, one of the reasons that we're placing Lake Shore Boulevard, one, it leaks, it's undersized and fire flows at the end are, are essentially compromised at the moment. So, but yeah, um, it's just, it's, it's so expensive when you look at the, the amount that has to be invested to replace these things. You know, so you just gotta, you know, keep going at it and go after the worst ones.
It's only eight million.
Yeah.
Eight point one million.
Thank you, Paul. I'm probably moving on to wastewater next.
Yep. That is correct. So. All right. So wastewater, talk about first about the collection system. So we have a gravity system, which is, uh, pretty common, um, consists of a hundred and thirty-five thousand feet of main. Pipe sizes are generally six to ten inches in diameter. We have five hundred and forty-three manholes. And the pipe materials usually consist of clay, cast iron, asbestos, concrete and PVC. Um, I mentioned some of these things because on the wastewater side, um, there's, there can be a lot more maintenance to go in and try to find, which we'll talk about in a little bit for INI. And, um, and every manhole should be inspected and maintained because it can lead to INI or failure, you know, that kind of thing. So, um, wastewater can be, have its own challenges. Um, so we're going to the next one. And so collection system, so we'll talk about inflow and infiltration. The, uh, INI basically two, two sources. Inflow being, uh, the green, which would be like a roof drain connection, an uncapped cleanout. Some way that the water is making it, uh, unobstructed into the collection system, into the sewer pipe. So make it into the home lateral and then running down to the sewer main. And then the other one would be infiltration, which would be cracks, um, in the sewer pipe, maybe, uh, holes in the manholes, some way that the groundwater is intruding and getting into the collection system. So the, um, the INI collected up from these, from these issues can really have an impact on the capacity requirements of your wastewater treatment plant. So, um, you really have to be aggressive at trying to tackle these issues. And it's a, it's a ongoing problem with most collection systems. Um, to put it in perspective as far as inflow, because, uh, the first storm event of every season, it's really interesting to, to watch how the data rolls out. And this was a good year because we got like three or four inches on our first storm. And so before that, it was just, you know, really dry weather. So we had average dry weather flows and then we had a pretty, uh, series of rainstorms. By the end of the third day of rainstorms, the flows increased at the wastewater treatment plant to almost five hundred percent. Um, increase from INI. And then they backed off as soon as the storms, you know, but, um, fell off and it became clear. Um, but, uh, it's interesting to see how much is actually coming through, um, the inflow of homes and however it's getting in there. And then, uh, so some of the ways we mitigate INI is, um, uh, video inspection. So, uh, we did recently, I think in about twenty eighteen, uh, uh, procure a camera van. That's state of the art. Um, it'll deploy about a thousand feet out. And, um, and TV the inside of the main, uh, look in the laterals, you can pivot around. And so it's a nice way to go through and then you identify, um, as you're filming all of the things that you come across documented and you make a list to go back and make some point repairs, replacements, slip line, whatever that'd be appropriate to try to help mitigate INI. Yeah, there is, uh, smoke testing. Um, I know we hit on some of this before. Uh, we do have, uh, CRWA coming out, um, this coming May to do some more testing and, uh, training on, on some of the smoke testing. And I think we're going to have other county agencies come around and assist to kind of get us in a momentum and really train our staff, staff on how to move forward with the smoke testing. Um, it seems simple by charging the system up with smoke, but there. It seems simple by charging the system up with smoke, but there's a lot of follow-up with, once you find it, identifying it, appropriately mapping it, and then also mitigating it, especially if it's on the customer premises. So that could be kind of complicated when you tell somebody they got a leak. And then, you know, you need to go in and, and confirm that instead of they go out and get a plumber and then they can't find anything and then, you know, they're not too happy about that. So then there's flow monitoring. We have all of our lift stations and our wastewater treatment plant all have flow monitoring capabilities. We also have insertable flow monitors that we go back from different zones and put in a particular lift station. And it will record the flows coming through at a given time. So it's a good idea, like in a storm event, to insert these. And then the technology is improving more and more. They actually have cellular devices now that it'll give you real-time data and trending as it happens. So you can set this up, let it run for forty-eight hours through a storm event, and it can give you some pretty good details of where most of the water is coming from. And then you just start following it back and try to identify it. Let's see. And then so continued mitigation. Slip line, the, the picture on the left is actual PVC line that goes in. It's, it's kind of decreased in size. They heat it up, they insert it in there, and then they inflate it with pressure. And it expands out on the, on the inside of the sewer main. And then in doing so, it also makes little dimples for each lateral that comes into it. So with the dimples, the contractor will come in and cut those out, and then it allows the laterals to pour it. So it's good. It's a really unique technology and very cost-effective. And then, of course, the collection system includes lift stations. We have eight lift stations that convey sewer to, from the system to the wastewater treatment plant. And they were, they were very well tested today. It's like a stress test. And then, then ultimately it goes out to the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant contains two large aeration ponds. They're eleven point one million gallons each. Then disinfection, and then it's pumped into a reservoir. And the reservoir basically holds the winter flows. And then the disposal is irrigating that water in the reservoir when you can, usually May through October, November. And so that's, that's the disposal process out there at the wastewater treatment plant. The, the reservoir is, you have to monitor it very closely. We only have six hundred and fifty acre feet. And there's nowhere for that to go if it exceeds that. And then we will be, we'll actually have a sewer spill. It's been, I think, two thousand and six, which required an expansion and everything. Since that's happened, we monitor it very closely. And so far, our system's performing well. And we are, we, we're in pretty good shape as far as volume goes up there. Okay. Design capacity, so it's just kind of an overview of, over on the right-hand column, it's the permit requirement. So we got to be below three hundred and ten million gallons for annually. Average dry weather flow, which is the flow measured from August first to October thirty-first. That's considered the driest part of the year. So that's focused on as that would be the most minimal flows coming in. And then max daily flow is the highest flow for one month period. And so you can see with our, our six years of performance here that we are well within the permit requirements. So everything's looking good on that end. And so projects recently completed, three effluent pumps were refurbished at the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant was first installed in nineteen ninety-two. So the plants were, or the pumps were due to be overhauled and refurbished for reliability. SCADA system server upgrade. And we also had an area, aeration pond evaluation. We started noticing these large ponds of aerated sewage, if you will. Started showing signs of failing, of some of the aprons failing on top. And it's really hard to see what's going on beyond that. So we had a, we hired a consultant to come out. We drained the pond. And they gave us an evaluation, which that's also something we can look forward to. And probably the next six to ten years is, is somehow mitigating the aeration ponds. And then projects in progress, the pipeline project, as I mentioned, on Lakeport Boulevard, Martin Street. Master plan update, as I mentioned, and then the chlorine conversion design, gas to sodium hypochlorate. And then always continuously INI mitigation efforts. And in the future, update the recycled water feasibility study. In two thousand and nine, a recycled water feasibility study was done by Pace Engineering. And it's, it's actually a really sound study, but it's just outdated. And so we need to update that to see what kind of tertiary treatment would be available. And, and what sources would, would take the supply that, of tertiary water. And so we're hoping that maybe agriculture, you know, eventually maybe purple pipe if there was a development. But purple pipe's extremely expensive to go through and install it in another, you know, in existing neighborhood. So it usually has to be something that's, that's planned. Aeration pond rehabilitation, as I mentioned a second ago, and then collection system maintenance. I think that concludes it. So any questions about wastewater?
Go ahead, anybody?
So Paul, the, the five hundred percent increase after three to five inches, that's I'm a huge fan of INI and when we got the gadgets to do all that. And it sounds like you have this incredible system where if you measure a bunch here, and then you measure it down here and it's less than, I mean, you can kind of like kind of zero in better with the equipment. But if I remember correctly, there's some very, very serious ramifications. If you exceed due to inflow and infiltration, if, if we exceed capacity and it has nowhere to go in the ponds, can you give us an idea what that's like if we were not to take care of business and plan?
Yeah, so if you don't monitor INI closely, eventually you could exceed, like you said, your capacity. And you're going to exceed your permit requirements. And then the worst thing would be to, to have an overflow of your reservoir. And then that's, yeah, they'll, and put in perspective, in two thousand and six, it was a two million dollar fine.
That's what I wanted the new council members to understand, just how important this is, because it is like a big, big deal. And when you have a five hundred percent increase within the storms and stuff like that, and I'm sure you're all over that and you're probably having all kinds of anxiety, but it looks like everything's going really well. And I'm, I'm just so in awe of all the, you know, pieces that in both parts, that it's just amazing that, that, that these things are so complicated and you seem to have a really good handle on it. But I also know that, you know, with something from nature that we just like tonight, that flows in creek beds and things like that. And who knows what kind of infiltration and inflows, particularly when things aren't taken care of and come to a surprise. It could be devastating if, if we're not all over it. So thank you for your really hard work and great presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and I will say today was a little bit of a stress test on our system. But we didn't have any spills. We're watching it closely. And that's the other thing is that the other part of it is, you know, that's at the wastewater treatment plant, but you can also have spills just out of a manhole, out of a lift station. And they can charge up to ten dollars per gallon for, as a violation for that. And, and in regulatory, which I think I'll do another, another piece further down the road for the council. But regulatory-wise, we also have the sanitary sewer maintenance plan that's being updated. And it's becoming more and more stringent on those items. In other words, if you have a spill, no matter what the spill is, there's a whole process that you have to go through that. You identify, of course, you mitigate the spill, you identify what caused it, and then you all meet and, and go after the mitigation efforts, whether it's replacement or whatever. They want to see constant improvement to, to, to help your system prevent that kind of stuff. So, but we've been fortunate. The, in two thousand and fourteen through sixteen, there was a big upgrade on North Main. And that has really helped get the flows from the north side to the south, out to our wastewater plant, where I understood that prior to that larger main being installed, it was, it was really tough not to have an overflow. So I feel blessed with some of those improvements. So. But yeah, we'll continue to make headway.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions or comments from council?
I, I have a comment. I just want to thank you for the report. It's so detailed and easy for anyone to understand. I hope we can get it maybe on the website. People could read it. And you just have a great handle on everything. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in there at the end. Then, great, great presentation. I do have just a couple of questions, which the smoke testing in May, it seems like we've been talking about it for a while now. I'm really excited for it. My, my question is, how, how do you isolate it? It seems like if you charge the system, it's going to be smoke popping up everywhere. Can you do like a certain section at one time and another? Can you explain it a little bit?
Yeah, you can. Typically in, on the street, every block will typically have a manhole. And then so basically it's a service hole to look at where connecting pipes are coming from streets. And then so you can get in there and access and service the main. And then so what you would do is you would go like, let's say a block, there's a manhole, a manhole. And you would drop a sandbag or a, or a plug. And then on one side, and then charge control from plugs, which side you want to charge. And then, and then plug the other side and then charge it with smoke. And then it's just going to be that block that you control.
Got it.
But, but like I said, there's a lot of steps that go with it, because if you don't notify, the fire department is going to be everything's going to go and it's, you know, it's almost supposed to go out the vents of the roof, but we're probably going to see a lot of gutters and that kind of thing. Yeah, notifying, you know, the public that it's going to happen to their house. And yeah, so there's a lot that goes with it.
Yeah, yeah, I can imagine. Well, I, I am excited for that. I know inflow and infiltration is something we've been talking about for a while.
Right.
One other quick question is, you mentioned that the heated PVC that goes in is a great way to the slip lines to seal. Is there a downside to it? And why don't we do that more often when it comes to the option of replacing sewer lines?
There's, it's always better to go with completely new pipe. And so it's kind of like, it fits a circumstance. In other words, if we have a, a main large enough to take it, because it minimizes the diameter slightly. So if you have a six inch, it's going to take it down to probably a five inch, because it's taking the ID and reducing it. That's one downside to it. But, but no, we are looking at it more and more. Just right now, we had to get some of these actual pipes replaced. And what we're working on couldn't be slip lined. And so it had to be replaced. But I tried to put some money every year in the budget for potential slip line projects and, and then go from there. Because it is, it is a, an effective tool. We had done it, we've done it under Park Place, because the sewer main actually runs under the restaurant. And so we're trying to figure out that we knew it was an INI contributor. And so that was a great solution for that one there. So, but, but no, it is always being looked at and evaluated as an option for sure.
Great. Well, thank you again for the presentation and your hard work. I didn't open it up to the public for any questions during the water portion. So water or wastewater, do we have anyone in the room that wants to speak or ask questions? Nobody's really jumping up. Nick, anyone online?
No hands online.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Good job, Paul. Thank you.
Next up is Public Works Director. We've got the roads update first. This is you, Ron?
That is, I mean, thank you, Pro Tim. First of all, I want to say Paul was being a little modest with the storm that we had earlier and the volume of water that we got between about eleven AM and three PM. Neither one of us thought we were going to make it to the meeting tonight at about two o'clock this afternoon. And it really, we're a small team and Paul's Utilities Crew. It was amazing to see them work. There, there's no time to stand around and look for someone else to take it up. And everybody jumped in and did what needed to be done. And frankly, I mean, they got on it so quick. It saved the city potential fines and penalties, because there was no sewer overflow. And that was no small task to accomplish in the volume of water that we got in that short amount of time. And so I wanted to give kudos to the Utilities Crew. And, you know, I was proud to be a part of that today and watch everybody just jump in and take care of that. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah, good job.
That being said, the roads.
Do we have?
I saw it on there a second ago. Okay, I got all kinds of windows open standby, just.
Standby.
There it is. So the roads overview, you know, there's a lot of great presentations that come in here. Director Hinoits gave a great legislative update on the housing legislation and the PERS update was fascinating. And everyone's competing for budget money, right? And my favorite topic happens to be the roads. So you can move along. The importance of the roadway system, I mean, everybody knows, has an idea of what the importance of the roadway network is to the city's infrastructure. It's much easier to see the importance of the roadway network than it is to see the water and sewer that's underground. Although, you know, Paul mentioned it in his report, often they go hand in hand in, in a lot of the projects. So we do have a lot of challenges to overcome in the city of Lakeport with, with the road system. And I feel like we've been making great progress in, in the recent past. And we'll get into some of the recent projects we've completed and what's upcoming. But there has been decades of deferred maintenance and limited funding. And the city manager and the management team, we talk about giving these overviews of departments prior to the budget workshop. And, you know, it gives the, the council an opportunity to help prioritize where some of that funding is going to go when we're making the tough budget decisions that we're all, I mean, we all have good arguments for the needs on each of our departments. And I definitely want to advocate well for the, for the road system. And then, you know, on top of the, the very competitive, limited budget funding we have, we have a very small staff that tackles complex state and federal regulations to go outside the general fund and compete for state and federal funds to kind of supplement what might be available from the, from the general fund. And we do, we do have a very strategic approach to addressing Lakeport's pavement challenges. You can just go ahead and go to the next one. We have a three-pronged approach. What we have decided to try to do is we got to keep the good roads good. It's, it is the most cost-effective strategy. And the good roads typically are, are pavement index scores are higher on the arterials and collectors than they are on the smaller residential streets. So, you know, portions of Main Street right now are in pretty good shape. Forbes Street's in, in pretty good shape. Eleventh Street, the pavement portion is in decent shape. And it's to our advantage financially to try to keep those in good shape and not let them deteriorate to a point where it would be super expensive to come back and reconstruct those from the base. And, and so that's what we do with the surface treatment on kind of the roads that are good. Then we, we're picking some projects on, on these main arterials and collectors where they have gone a little too far and they need a little more attention. And we've made some progress on those. North Main Street from Fifth out to Clear Lake Avenue is a recent example of that. We'll get into the upcoming projects in a little bit. we'll get into the up upcoming projects in a little bit, but we've really made some strides in the residential areas recently where uh, we don't necessarily do a full reconstruction of the road, but we do what is a double chip seal with a with a leveling course. And it's a cost-effective thing that we feel can stand the test of time in those residential areas because of the the, you know, the less traffic volume. And recently, we've done the Fourteenth Orchid and Palm uh, neighborhoods over there that were in desperate need of attention. The Del Lago neighborhood, Montana Vista via Del Lago. And we also did, uh, one of the biggest challenges, we did the double chip seal with the leveling course was North Main from Clear Lake Avenue all the way out to the end. That segment of road presented a number of challenges and I'm I'm really happy with with how that came out and how that product is holding up over the last couple of years. So um, that's kind of our three-pronged approach. We Measure Z has had an impact on on what we can do, particularly in those residential areas. That's opened up some of the general fund money, some of the arterials and collectors that are bigger projects, we would never fund with Measure Z or general fund. Um, it Measure Z may supplement some of that, but we're definitely competing for state and federal funding to do some of the bigger projects. Uh, but since it passed in in two thousand fourteen, we've completed nine and a half miles of of road improvements. And that's a little bit over thirty-one percent of the total road network, which is thirty center center line miles in the city of Lakeport. And we've been keep updating this cool map I brought in the back that shows the work um, that's been done on the surface since uh, the passing of Measure Z. So this is one of the most asked questions I get is how do we decide? What's next? How, you know, everybody that has a bad road wants their road done and it's most important to them as as it would be to me. And so Paul's presentation covered it very well. Paul and I work very closely together. There is no point in repaving a road if the water and sewer is in horrible condition and is gonna need to be replaced six months or nine months or a year after you spend all the money redoing the road. Now, there are circumstances that come up sometimes where we pave a road and something unforeseen happens. And it's it's everyone in Public Works and Utilities nightmare when we have to dig in a in a good road. And so Paul and I work very closely together on, okay, here's my top list, Paul. What's your top list of water? What's your top list of sewer? We take into account the the daily traffic loads and, you know, the what the fire flows need to be under those roads. And, you know, often it it it's a very long discussions on one little segment of road before we can agree on, yes, this seems to be the priority, not only for what we can see and feel as we drive. But often it's it's really more important on what's going on underground at that that point. And so that really plays a big part in the prioritization. And not only, you know, do we not want to dig it up? If we are combining water, sewer and surface improvements all at the same time, we get an economy of scale. And it's it's much cheaper for both of our projects if we can make a bigger project and have one contractor come in and and do these kind of things. So uh, that is definitely the biggest driver of how we prioritize what's gonna get done next. And going along with it, Paul talked about all of his uh, twenty twenty-four pipeline project. And it's it's not really Paul's project, it's our project, right? And we're all working together on that. And as with any underground project, unforeseen things get dug up. And the costs may go up. Sometimes the cost has gone down, like we've dug things up and we, that's not as bad as we thought. And so, but anyway, as this pipeline project progresses, there is going to be an amount of funding left over to repave some of the worst arterials and collectors in Lakeport, which Martin Street is, I mean, nobody would disagree that Martin Street is in is in horrible shape. And, you know, as as a result of going along with this pipeline project, we can certainly get some surface improvements there. And there are portions of Lakeshore Boulevard where the the pavement's failing and we're gonna address that in conjunction of this. And then eh, just see how far we can go once we get closer to the end and have a better idea of what the budget constraints are on remaining on that pipeline project. So future plans are the South Main Street project. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't get that in before the weather shifted on us this year, but we do have all of the funding secured and obligated. So uh, after, you know, the meetings with with our engineering team and the contractors' engineering team, um, we didn't want to rush this. The temperature was a critical part of the longevity of that project. And so we really thought, as bad as everybody wanted to get that done, including myself, you know, before the weather changed, we didn't want to sacrifice longevity just to have a quick fix. And so it really was the prudent thing to delay that project until it warms up. There's a very specific surface temperature that we need to maintain while the asphalt goes down in order to ensure the longevity. But that eh, will be completed in the spring of twenty twenty-five. And that goes along with uh, the pedestrian improvements that we also did on uh, South Main. Lakeport Boulevard is uh, there are a lot of moving pieces on Lakeport Boulevard. We have another item after this report that that's gonna talk about a contract amendment with a design firm that has to do with Lakeport Boulevard. Um, it's WMH who did a great project scoping report for us on the roundabout at Bevins. For the Nexus for potential impact fees. And really, we envisioned the courthouse connecting there. But we have some challenges in working with the courthouse project, which is another moving part that is definitely tied in to the Lakeport Boulevard project. And then there was a very old RSTIP project that was funded to put a roundabout at South Main and Lakeport Boulevard. Um, there were financial challenges with that. It was grossly underfunded. Um, we felt like that that project was never going to come to fruition there in the near future. And we were at risk of losing the RSTIP funding for that. And so it was a very difficult process to take that project back to the CTC and Caltrans and get it reprogrammed and re-scope to do some surface improvements in the road. And break that project into two phases. We have phase one funded now. This is what's upcoming um, in twenty-six. It could go into fiscal twenty-seven, but we've broken that and phase one will be the resurfacing of Lakeport Boulevard and continuous pedestrian paths from South Main all the way up uh, to Vista Point. And then there are crosswalks across Bevins and so we would have some continuous pedestrian paths from Main Street to Vista Point and beyond. I I put in uh, Forbes Creek head wall repair, which also goes along with the one lane traffic control that's been in place on Hartley for quite some time. It wasn't too long ago, I gave council an update on those two projects and and the challenges and the delays that are faced on uh, meeting all the federal right away and environmental requirements, particularly and how many times that goes back and forth and it just sits in the state agency or a federal agency's hands for review. And it just sits and sits and sits. And we just wait and wait. We are making progress on those two and we're about to wrap up the right away portion, which will then eh, will be squarely into the waiting for the construction portion. Um, so I I just wanted to bring those up because eh, those are still out there. And it's certainly some of the the challenges we face. And everything seems to take so long. And before I worked for the city, I was one of the people that said, wow, that's been there for years. Why don't they do anything? And uh, I had no clue. Nothing would make all of us happier than to have those fixed al- already. But uh, with the budget constraints in the general fund, the city just does not have the funds to do this out of their general fund and and forego any uh, state or federal assistance. And so that's why those are still still there. But we haven't forgotten them and we most definitely haven't stopped working on them. So excuse me, one of the things that I came, when I came in after Doug Greier left, one of the first things I had done was apply for an active transportation plan um, grant. The county and Lake APC have always put together a regional active transportation plan. And it's great to have a regional active transportation plan. Often regional projects uh, it can get funded. However, there was never an active transportation plan that I could find that focused solely on the two and a half square miles it is the city of Lakeport. And I thought it was really important to go after this active transportation plan. Um, this is the key. This is the first step in acquiring the state and federal funding that we so desperately need to continue to make progress. Not only on the pavement, but complete connectivity um, with bike and ped and complete streets and, you know, some of the improvements that we get the community feedback on that that we would like to see. And so we've we went aggressively after this and I had some out of the box ideas on how we might fund the match of this grant. And it triggered an audit from Caltrans, which we passed with no findings. But don't try to get too creative when uh, you're trying to explain to the state how you intend to match their grant funds, or they may come look. But, you know, we welcome them. Come on back because we have detailed records and we can survive uh, uh, close scrutiny from from any of the state and federal sources. Um, community engagement i- is always a big part of of any of these that we do. We talked about the comms piece and, you know, that's a big part of the community engagement. Often all of the funding sources require a certain amount of community outreach. And every program that's run by the state or the feds, it seems like everybody wants community outreach. And I feel like it kind of starts to get like sign fatigue, right? Because people come in, they give their input, they give their opinion, this is what they want. And then you're in the waiting portion and nothing happens. And so if they've come down and they've given their input and, you know, the wheels of government are turning, but they don't know that. And then the next thing they see is, oh, we need community outreach for this project. They go get their community outreach. Now that one's going through the slow process. And in the meantime, they feel uh, this is the feedback I get that I have gotten from members of the public and people that have reached out to me that, you know, I've given community input on ten things and nothing seems to get done. It's just plan, 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 and you want our input, but nothing happens. And, you know, I I can understand where their frustration comes from. However, we would not be competitive in any way if eh, the community wasn't involved in you know, participating in those plans. And so uh, we give these updates, we give the comms piece uh, a lot of attention. We do have the active transportation plan. We invite people in and, you know, that really does uh, make the whole process transparent. Um, we try to be available. Um, I'm available if if anyone has questions at the public or council, you know, I'm happy to talk about these things. This is what I do all day, every day. And I I get passionate about a lot of these things and I'm very happy to to discuss them with anyone. Uh, so, yeah, we try to stay transparent and keep people up to date on what's going on. And that's it. That's my roads update.
Thank you, Ron. Any uh, questions or comments from council?
Yeah, Ron, um, surprise, surprise, surprise. Um, the um, I had a conversation with Kevin. Um, I hope he's catch on his flight and getting where he needs to go. But anyway, the um, the one thing that I always hear about over on the Lost Continent is people driving from Timbuktu to go to um, the Pomo pumps. And now we have one outside of town. And when I was talking to Kevin, he said there's a huge portion of our budget, uh, like twenty-five percent comes from gas tax. And I have like two questions. The um, the impact is not really quite known. We have a new um, native gas station outside of town. And um, I'm sure that's going to have an impact. Um, and it could be devastating. I mean, they're only like a mile out of Lakeport and and the question I would have is I look at the pumps quite often when I'm watching the money roll up. And there's like seventy-eight cents or something tax between sales tax and federal. Um, normally we get SB one money. And the question would be, do they pay? Because they do they pay uh, sales tax and SB one or both or neither? Or do you know?
At the new?
At all, at all of the, because they're usually on sovereign land and they have special um, uh, kind of, they're a beneficiary of certain programs.
I'm not sure what they've had. I don't believe they pay in the SB one or HUDA.
They're they're not, they don't.
That 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 was my point. And and I I wrote a letter and ran it through chat, uh, whatever. I'm sending it to the to the um, various chamber, the two chamber of commerce and kind of generally to the public to let them know that while I'm not saying don't go there, but SB one money has done unbelievably well for the state of California and the project that Caltrans has done just on on twenty-nine between Lakeport and Rodman Slough. And then where it collects into Rodman Slough. I mean, it's unbelievable. And other projects that I see all around the county, it's big, big money. And they're not paying that. And I'm just kind of um, admonishing people or begging people to at least occasionally, you know, buy at somewhere where the money is coming back to the city of Lakeport because we do get some of that funding. And it's important to make sure that the decisions that you make to buy, whether you're going over to, you know, Costco and stopping at their pumps and all your sales taxes going over there to Mendocino County and and forget about the thirty-five dollars of wear and tear and gas. And then they're getting all the money, we're getting nothing. And and we're, you know, we're getting in pretty dire straits when you see the UAL and those kind of things. So um, I just think that this is kind of like a smaller elephant in the room. But people really need to think about the longevity and the roads and all that stuff. And they can make a difference by at least, you know, buying before you leave, you know, tractor supply, you know, the gas stations that are in here, you know, might bring in sales tax and SB one. Whereas running out to a a native casino um, unfortunately doesn't pay SB one. And it certainly doesn't support uh, the Lakeport sales tax. So would you have any comment on that?
I I mean, I like to have as much money to address the issues with the roads as as possible.
Good answer. Yeah, I I I'll just touch on it briefly. So I think it's important to make the differentiation between sales tax and SB one and HUDA. So the SB one and HUDA that we receive isn't distributed directly at the pump, right? Those monies are collected by the state and then distributed equally. It's it's the sales tax um, that we're not generating from uh, gas being sold at the pump that has the the most impact of the general fund. In all honesty, you know, more of an impact than um, you know, tribal owned uh, gas stations is electric vehicles for HUDA and SB one. And and again, plug for Cal Cities, you know, their transportation group is is working very closely with Caltrans and Caltrans is generating, you know, uh, VMT uh, s- style um, models to collect additional tax dollars that aren't being collected at the pump anymore. So um, that's also something to get involved in to to better understand how uh we're trying to change uh the collection of those taxes. So it's not just collected at the pump.
Yeah. So Nick, since you have the mic and you know what's going on there. Eh I remember when I was at Cal Cities that they said that the average vehicle, uh electric vehicle pays like something like a hundred and eighteen dollars and the average car that uses gasoline pays triple that in eh eh in fees. And so, yeah, that is a big one too, but I also the big thing is is that the sales tax that we get directly when people leave, you know, to do whatever it is, but particularly gas, when I hear it's twenty five percent of our budget, that's a lot. And so and but we all benefit from SB one money, which isn't going in. So it's just another small reason to reconsider every time that you might want to make that drive. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any any other council members?
Yeah, um, beautiful report, Ron. I think there might be some sort of competition going on here because um I don't know, they're looking really good, but um your goals and planning are paying off. The it seems like the road condition is not the hot topic that it used to be. You know, people would just complain, complain, complain. And we, you know, you guys have been chipping away and it's really making a difference. So stay passionate.
Couldn't stop him.
Can't.
Uh, yeah, I I'll chime in with that. Um I was surprised. I wanted to see the map that you have in the back bigger in the presentation so people online could see it too, because since the passing of Measure Z, we have done a lot of paving. And yes, it might not be right in front of everybody's house, but as a whole, we are, we are chipping away at it slowly, but surely. So thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Um, I think I want to see if there's anybody in the room that has any roads, comments or or questions while we're on this topic. Nobody in the room? Anybody online?
No hands online.
Okay, thank. Anybody else from council have anything to say about the the roads for Ron?
I appreciate you taking time earlier today to explain a couple of things to me, not in um. Yeah, thank you.
Next is another Ron item, the WMH contract authorized the city manager to execute the second amendment to the professional services agreement with WMH Corporation.
Sure, this is uh right back to the Lakeport Boulevard project that we brought up in the in the roads update. Council approved a contract with WMH to develop a project scoping report for a roundabout at the Bevins intersection, which would be a nexus for impact fees for future development, particularly on the west side of the of the highway. And because with the future development of the courthouse and other predicted, you know, traffic increases in the area, um, we thought the the Bevins roundabout uh was was a prudent thing to to have uh the initial design for. And WMH did a great job on on providing that for us. And we we have that PSR complete um. And there was a little bit of money left on their contract and in moving the project on Lakeport Boulevard from a roundabout at South Main to more road improvements and pedestrian improvements on Lakeport Boulevard. We thought it was advantageous to investigate with WMH if they would be willing to begin the design phase of those improvements on Lakeport Boulevard with us because they have a lot of the knowledge, the measurements, the surveying, some of the surveying done. They have and we had a little bit of leftover budget. So there was about twenty six thousand five hundred dollars left over on their budget. Their proposal to design the improvements on Lakeport Boulevard that have been approved by the CTC and the funding is secured eh for the construction. The the current design proposal for them on that uh was seventy seven thousand five hundred for a difference of for the contract amendment was fifty one thousand thirty nine dollars and nineteen cents. And so the staff report plus the road report I just gave kind of lays it out really well. And we're asking that the council authorizes city manager to execute the second amendment to the professional service agreement with the WMH Corporation.
Thank you, Ron. Um, any clarifying questions here from the council? Not seeing any. I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the room have any questions of this item? Looks like no one in the room. Nick, any hands raised online?
Seeing none online.
All right, bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I have a quick question. Uh, where where are we going to pull the money from in the budget?
So it would be out of the general fund and the general fund would be reimbursed through a future impact fees that are collected.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Prozam, if there's nothing further, I'd move to authorize the city manager to execute the second amendment to the professional services agreement with WMH Corporation.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Uh, last up here tonight, we have the city council communications. We'll go around the room, starting with community development director Henowitz.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, chief.
Um, I would just like to add a few words, the the wonderful words that Mayor Potem uh Disney offered at the beginning of the meeting regarding the uh incident that occurred in Library Park on Friday evening. And the collaborative uh work that was done between law enforcement agencies. I just want to also commend and and make sure the council notices uh Ron and Paul's employees as well. Uh, they were called out late that evening and uh, you know, responded in very timely. Brought necessary equipment to assist us in in the investigation and securing the scene with barricades and a pop-up and and also uh, you know, staffed some of the points, the entry and exit points to make sure people stayed out while uh work was done. And uh, it's just the internal uh collaboration that that happens as well is is a huge part of uh the successes that uh happened here in in city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Utilities Director Harris.
Uh, no report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing further to report.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, just really quickly, as I'm sure most of you are aware, uh, tonight will be my last uh council meeting here with you guys. Um, it is a little bittersweet. Um, you know, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, that the city of Lakeport is a fantastic place to work and that is not why um I've made the decision to to move on. And I'm definitely going to miss the relationships that have been created here. Um, it's a great place to work, you know, it it's been a great place of place to work since I've been here. It starts with um, the council members and and the executive staff and my staff and really sta- all staff at the city of Lakeport really care um about what we do. Um, and so, you know, a big thank you to to you guys and to everybody. Um, and I've tried to leave things in an orderly place. Um, you know, I've gotten a lot of the big projects uh pushed along as far as I can. Um, and hopefully there'll be a pool of good candidates and I'm sure there will be somebody else that will do the job very well as well. And you know, I'm not moving to Tennessee. Um, I'm still going to be a resident of Lake County and I'll be around. Uh, you all have my phone number, so um, I'm sure I'll see you guys around.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you for everything, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. Um, City Attorney Anderson.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrative Services Director.
Um, yes, I just wanted to give a shout out also to the utilities and public works crew um today that worked swiftly and coordinated um as they are known to do. So hats off to them. Um as as you know, City Manager Ingram meant to be here tonight, but got delayed with some um travel delays uh while he's attending the Cal Cities City Managers Conference. And I just wanted to uh say that um we're really going to miss Nick Walker. That he has accepted a director position somewhere in Sonoma County. I'll let him announce where that is. And his last day is Friday. Uh, worked with Nick for eight years. He's definitely leaving the finance department in a better than he found it. And his award winning budgets really make me mad because I never get an award winning MOU. But um, we will definitely miss him and um wish him well. At his name. Place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, Councilmember Matina?
Thank you, Nick. I can't believe it's already this really too quick. You have done so many wonderful things for the city and we are really going to miss you. And I I feel really proud to be part of the city right now. Uh, you guys have all just gone above and beyond and impressed everybody. Um, we we are so lucky to live in this community, but I think a lot of people don't realize how lucky they are to have you guys out there and doing what you guys do to keep it all going. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Price?
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Pravat?
Well, Stacy, as she's done over the last several years, kind of stole my thunder, but um I cannot be more impressed with the knowledge and the presentations and how succinct and and excellent they were and what you do and how you lead your staff. And the staff didn't just do a great job because it's all inherent. A lot of that all that probably a lot of that comes from leadership. So thank you for some excellent presentations and Nick, um, your refunding, I think it was just alluded to it briefly, the, you know, countless millions of dollars that we've saved by doing the right thing at the right time and managing that UAL, which always terrifies me. And and I don't think people really appreciate that one thing and how much of a difference it it's made in 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 Lakeport. But I too, am so proud of the leadership and the people that we have working for us. And you guys just blow me away. So I'm I'm glad to be back for a while to keep an eye on you guys, but you're doing a fabulous job. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, my my report is much the same. We're really going to miss Nick. Those are some big shoes to fill. We will probably need to boost the Facebook post to to get a qualified applicant, but um, you definitely have left us in a better place than which you started, at least from what I've heard. I've only had a couple of years working with you, but good luck in your new endeavor and you'll be missed here. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.